And I clicked the little recording thing, right? Is it Rob or somebody on here? When the meeting starts, when the meeting starts, I click recording. Okay. Okay. So you can tell me when it's done. This, the clock's not working in my. Okay, okay. There's no time.
Like six minutes ago.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
There's no.
No, there's no left. There's nothing. Once the screen came up, there's no. Time. Oh, oh, thank you.
That's what's five fifty-four.
Fifty-four, okay. I will use, we used go to webinar and. We used go to webinars once. I used.
Everybody has something different.
Yeah. But they're, they're going to zoom, I think. They've decided that they like use, they want to use them instead.
It works pretty good. So far. I've used it. To get a hold of people on my laptop at home and talk to my, my advisor and stuff like that. And we have had traveled to Portland to talk.
Oh, yeah. Right. There's, I'm glad they invented it for that. I don't think so, but.
All right, let's take your part by actual time. And I call this meeting of the.
I pushed the button, but it doesn't. It says recording and the little, a little cloud.
Okay. James Tarnell present, Tom Miller. Thank you, Ryan. And I'm Twitter, Adam Hanning from.
And our announcement, our city manager is out sick tonight. I don't believe she's on Zoom either.
I don't see her on team.
Anyone have any changes to the agenda that they would like to make?
Any other question about?
Okay.
Uh, with citizen comments. The comments regarding staff are not allowed and may be asked to stop commenting. I think. I don't know when that got put in there. I think it was the last meeting, but it's, yeah, I think that we're. We're walking a very fine line with that first amendment, right?
Well. The reason she put it in there, I believe, was privacy for, for the employees. Other than that, I don't, you know, if you're not talking about a specific employee, in general, talking about. Employees, I guess. That's something you got. And through there. All right, well, there's no changes. We need to motion to approve the agenda.
We are making the approved agenda. Okay, in a second.
A motion by Councilor Miller and second by Councilor Carlisle. And a discussion. All in there.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Now we need to approve the minutes for the October tenth meeting. In motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the October tenth point meeting for meeting.
I'll second that. And then discussion. Okay, I'll.
The copy I got does not have a page three. I wondered if others got a page three and it was just me.
So I noticed that.
I don't know how we did it through. Yeah.
Oh, you must have missed him or you must have missed putting it in your packet.
Would you like me to print them?
Can we get a copy of the page three?
I mean, if we could look over it.
That would be nice.
He's got a lot of coffee.
It is not. It is a. All in favor?
No.
All opposed? Okay, we'll get that to answer hand. Citizens comments. Citizens can have three minutes to comment as they wish, but I don't believe I got the opinion. While that was. The church.
Good evening. I'm going to basically do a really brief report on the holiday drink. On November twenty-second, we started about ten o'clock. Everyone who owns a, a building or a car. Was notified that we were going to be sending it up. And. Dennis had the engine floor pallet trains where we're crossing and. Here into the city hall. So my husband Rudy and I, we helped bring the senior of the steps cars and the two library. Cars that were in Kina Library. Uh, on the twenty-first, Rudy and I actually went to City Hall, spray painted pink lines to wear all the. Cars that were trying to go, but maybe go a lot quicker. He knew that was, it doesn't have a building in the center. And then as cars came, we just went one, two, three, four, all the way along the lines. Uh, we had some great help by members of the Jenkins Club. We had Karen Kern, March Sovereign, Carol Stevens. And once we had the cars in line, they had a mallet and they just started plating. So it went up really, really quick. The driven from uh, North Lake Resort came and she put out the lollipops. Uh, in the, the things. She actually donated all the lights that are on, on the train. So on Monday, Rudy and I came and then with the help of Dennis, Dennis gave us some clips and we started. Putting the flips and securing the lights to the, the trains. I'm not exactly sure when, we probably follow them on Monday. So I think he probably put the lights, but he connected it to the lights that are on. The, the building. And so far. They haven't got. Some, because there's nine strings of lights. Uh, just on the cars and that, so, uh, but my recommendation would be if we can get a plug in. In the front area so that. Make sure if you get, we can, we can plug in the, the light center because the nine strings basically just use, you know. There's sixteen cars for building. Fanta. The reindeer, you know, so and I've already had inquiries by two other people who are interested in putting two more cars. Uh, we were minus two cars by the owners, but they're just trying to chase them. Why they either going to use it, but their property are going to revise the one that they had. And there's still one that's MIA. So we would have had a total of nineteen cars if everyone had come in. So, uh, the weather was great. Uh, when we were coming to do the lights, it was like, okay, gale force winds really going sideways. And I'm getting the call from the fire chief saying you really wanted to, but it stopped. It was fine and it went again pretty quickly. So. Next, next year, January and February, I'll be coming to admission of the new city council.
Thank you.
Yeah, then we have Nicky Martin.
I just want to make sure that your guide is, does your certifications on my name spelled the right way? I hope, yeah. Cause the one online is not. So I didn't want to be like. Certified until. That's all.
Thank you. And that's it on the comments. Along the old business, we have the female blood plane. Re-implementation compliance measure. Which is the moratorium on what we're going to do on that because there's some legal issues and some question about. Exactly how it would be implemented. So we need to pass our ordinance, which is in your pocket. And we need a motion to. A resolution, resolution.
I make a motion to pass Lakeside City Council Resolution number twenty-four dash fourteen.
Second. And a motion made by. The fee and seconded by. Councilor Miller. And it was good.
I just want to. Make sure to work clear on what the moratorium is on. I know it's required, so I'm not questioning it, but. It's a moratorium on the need to build within the regulatory platform. Which means nobody with property in the flood plain would be able to do any, any excavation, any grading, any construction. And if their home is damaged. More than fifty percent of its value, they won't be able to repair it. There's a lot of things that there's a moratorium on. I mean, I know we have to do it because. That's required to stay in the national flood insurance program. I'm just saying this to make sure we, we all know that we have to move. Quickly to get the ordinance in place as soon as possible.
I assume that the process because of the planning commission, Bert.
If. Some part of it will have to go through the planning commission. I suggested in our previous discussion here that we take the flood plain. Ordinance when, when it does come before us. And put it into its own section in the municipal code. There's actually a section in the municipal code that's titled flood damage prevention. That's where this code belongs. And at some point in the past, it got, it got inserted into the land use code, which made it. The planning commission's purview, but it's not supposed to be there.
And this so not understand is that we put this moratorium on until March thirty-first. Which would give us a couple three months from now.
Actually, the resolution said two different things. It says March thirty-first, but it also said until we get an ordinance in place.
And I did, I do follow that. It would feel like that's something that needs more thinking of.
No, okay. I mean, if March thirty-first is coming up and we still haven't gotten an ordinance in. Thing, then. Have to extend it.
Councilor Wood.
Um, I noticed a few like typo errors. The first. Part, they said city complex has two Cs in it. Um. The second paragraph, whereas first of all, the point, very end, it has. Two. Forget what you call those little things. Yeah, like blanking on the name. Uh, but that's not that big of a deal, but the end, it says adopted by the city council. And approved by the acting mayor of Lakeside this twelfth day of November twenty-four.
Also, one more note that I made on. The second, where, third, whereas second option, I'm reading the. It mentions the county language, should that be bidding? Right in the middle of the first page.
And the language that you're looking at is actually female's language. And they wrote county in there rather than city or county.
Which should have been.
I think we're, I think we're adopting females language here.
And we're not adopting number two anyways.
No, they don't. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye. I.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now we have, I have to be under old businesses, the art fund. What we need to do is schedule a special meeting as soon as possible. Chris is back and can deal with that. And I would suggest first quarter next week. So what can people, what day can people do that?
I'm good.
I'm only here Tuesday here.
Yeah. Thanks.
Tuesday, six o'clock here. Six, okay? Okay. Well, let's do that. All right.
It's not the seventeenth.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We probably need to have a motion to schedule the special meeting on the, on the sixth.
I'm moved that we schedule a special meeting on the sixteen. At six o'clock.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Correction, on seventeen, six P M.
And just getting further discussion. All in favor?
Need a second?
Okay. Do we have a second or do we not?
A second.
Okay.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, jury. We should have by the election, just the formality that we need to approve them. Document that we have for the county on the election. And we need a motion for that. I'll make a motion to certify the election. Uh, the resolution number twenty, twenty-four dash thirteen.
Okay.
Break the discussion again. In favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion, jury. The election is certified. Okay, we have. I have them there besides certifying the election that we schedule a ceremony. I'm not precisely sure what our. City manager meant, but. I know she's been talking about meeting wreaths and. Maybe. A ceremony to swear people in earlier than the council meeting, which. I'm not sure if it's the proper way to do it. We have a motion on that. Just that we do it, not, not the date or anything.
I make a motion to schedule a ceremony after the certification of elections.
Sorry. Anybody say? Discussion.
Uh, so that would be like, it's January ninth, the meeting when swearing happens is what I've heard.
Yeah.
And then this ceremony would be a whole separate thing.
That's what she was talking about.
Okay.
So she's not here. I believe the city charter says of the new council and mayor Shoren laugh of questioning. If you want to have a ceremony, a meet and greet, I think everybody's not greeted this. Okay.
I. I need to make a motion.
This is confusing.
Yeah.
Christmas. Love behavior.
I feel like the scheduling of ceremony should be left up to anyone.
It says on the charter, first. Meeting in general. Okay, well. Let's just. So we have, do we have a motion or not?
Yes, we had a motion and a second.
Okay, so.
I can fix it.
All in favor or all in favor of having the ceremony on some date? Anyone?
I.
Both. So I could pass those three and four. And we will, we will work on schedule for that and.
Three names.
Three, three.
Three and three.
Listen, okay. It's, it's tied, it's, doesn't pass. Okay, we'll work on that. All right. More than community reports, airport committee, probably don't have anything from that.
Watership. I was, I wasn't able to attend the meeting Tuesday, but. I did walk down to the. Project down below the sewer plant thing, just looked at all the, you know, four things. Looks good, no debris, everything's clear. Oh, we did. We did go down and remove a log that was hung up. Down at Armstrong's dock, span the creek and one end was hung up on one side and one of the others. You're ready to go down and remove that. Did any more damage last, last week. So. I thought I got.
Okay, thank you, Justin. I attended the water point meeting and they just discussed the regular business. They had the. Had the divers out and inspected the tanks and found some things that they need to consider about those. Still working on. Getting people to agree on the rate increase, but that's pretty much it. I don't need more at this point. And in my lake association.
On the meeting in November, they talked about the no wake sign that has. Been put up and evidently the people who have been watching that, it seems to be working so far. The next meeting is going to be February fifth, five thirty at the lodge. And also the Elliott Forest has been approved to be on the carbon credit program. So if you have any discussion on that, you can get ahold of the Himala Lake Association. And. The lake level from last year to this year is up two feet.
Our fire district guy was unable to attend the meeting, so they don't have to report him now.
As many of you know, we have a big set of events scheduled to start happening tomorrow evening, running through Saturday evening. Uh, it is going to be cold and wet for the most part, but we're going to be there with big smiles on our faces. We really hope to see everyone from the community.
Um, we've been dead in the water with that. Most of our co enforcement people have. Uh, left the committee and so I'm hoping next month we'll be getting things start. And so I'm hoping next month we'll be getting things back on.
All right, now there was something that, uh, the city manager put out on code enforcement. Find it again, yes. Yeah, in her report. That, uh, that letters have been put out and, uh, individuals have been talked to or at a meeting, supposed to be talked to. Um, code enforcement as well on its way according to, uh, the city manager code enforcement as well on its way with letters going out, meeting with property owners, inquiry, resolutions to concerns, and the code enforcement log and phone log are included. So.
There were city managers' report, but we don't have our city manager. That is available online if you'd like to read it. And we need someone to read it.
I can read it.
Okay.
Um, sewer billing, the billing software has been upgraded unknown to us, paper in its order of processing no longer works. Staff worked an entire week to find out the software has changed, the printing, stamping, and cutting by hand. We are working to find alternatives to the issue. Dapping, we have let our temporary worker move on to another position, this will improve the quality and precision of council minutes among other work. We can guarantee all minutes will be brought current by this meeting. Arfa funding, I would like to have a more in-depth discussion of the funding, if here's there has been some confusion of budget and the funding. I also recommend a special meeting to award contracts, not all the estimates are in, but this will give us more time to get those for you. Supplemental budget, this meeting should coincide with the article funding, at least two weeks notice is needed, we will publish this in the world as soon as it is set today.
Yeah. They agree with that.
Who was back for that?
Yeah, we can.
Code enforcement, code enforcement as well on its way with letters going out, meeting with property owners, inquire, require reads, and resolutions to concern. The code enforcement log and phone log are included. Meetings, I attended the L O C elected essentials in North Bend and the O G E C Oregon Government Ethics Commission training in Prycer. Training, a separate training will be held for those convinced any of the two mentioned above, you will not get credit from, O G E C for me, but it's a good, but it is good information. Counselors are required to complete it once through O G E C in their turn.
So we agreed a little bit ago to have the ARFA meeting on Tuesday. But if we do that in conjunction with a, with a, supplemental budget meeting that needs to be there two weeks, that's going to push it out like the twenty-eighth or thirtieth. Of the month. I don't know how we can, talk about ARFA Tuesday. I, I just don't know how we do those together. I mean, I don't think it makes sense. To have a meeting that late in the month. Our, we're like, we're gonna have, we have to. So we can't have this meeting on Tuesday, is that what we're saying?
I think we, I, I, we could, and then we just bring it, but we're gonna have to have another meeting, a supplemental budget meeting. We need two weeks, so at least two weeks away, so I'm scheduled.
I have two meetings.
Yeah.
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 So should we cancel that now?
Uh, let's wait for, for the expression. We'll still, we'll still have, we'll schedule that. Tuesday.
Seventeen, or in the, it's two weeks from the day it's the paper. Which might take a day or so after me.
I'm just really not sure, but what we need to do to me.
So today, today's the twelve, or the thirteenth, if we had the meeting on, if we made, scheduled the meeting on the seventeenth, Tuesday, like we discussed, two weeks from that would be the thirty-third, very close. So, I always feel like we should go ahead and schedule that meeting, on the twenty-eight, or on the twenty-seventh, maybe. That would be good.
No, that's too late, I know, it's not for the ARFA, we're talking about the supplemental budget. Yeah, so we.
If we schedule that meeting on the twenty-seventh, which, we can make an announcement tomorrow, and.
Well, it's the announcement of our form.
Maybe Monday. And if it went out Monday, that'll push us to the thirty.
If somebody gave you four hundred thousand dollars to save personally, then you're sent to the meeting.
We're not all except all of us.
I know you're not, but.
We don't have an option legally, we have to wait two weeks to have a phone meeting.
Yeah, that, that's not for the, the, the meeting is not, the, the two, meeting in two weeks is not to obligate the ARFA, as far as supplemental.
Okay, but why can't we just go ahead and do the ARFA now instead of waiting?
We're doing it Tuesday.
You have a special meeting when?
Yeah, we're doing it Tuesday.
And.
We did not, we did not have.
We did have the bids.
We didn't have the information of the union.
You had bids.
It's rock, it's his desk. That is, uh, not what the city manager told me. Yeah, wow.
I mean, they fired.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion now? Meeting on the twenty-seventh?
If, if we assume that we can get an, announce in the paper on the sixteenth, then two weeks would be the thirty. On Monday.
Do it on the thirtieth then?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we schedule a meeting on the supplemental budget, for December third or at six P M.
Second.
Second.
My second.
All will raise your hand if you approve the decision. All, all in favor?
I.
Paul? Motion, jurors, so we'll have a meeting on the thirtieth, or next, but that will be a special meeting. Okay.
Mayor, who, who was the, um, who made the motion and who was the second? Please.
Councilor Hand made the motion and, uh, Councilor Wood, second.
Okay. Just for my notes, thank you.
All right, any announcements? Okay, Kelly Cormer.
Just want to congratulate the new coming council members and the new mayor elect, that's going to be in January.
I just wanted to say, uh, thanks to everybody that, I'm sure everybody's been down, down seeing all the lights go, and there was a big, group of people that turned out and did a great job decorating down there, looked really nice. So we should all be very proud of that.
Um, I wanted to talk to council because, um, September twelfth, me, Adam, and Jim had called an executive session, and it's never been held, um, to discuss, uh, doing, uh, uh, a review of the city manager and talk about the contract, of the city manager, um, that we're coming up on a probationary period on the twenty-seventh. Um, I talked to the attorney. Um, it would be a good time to do that, um, and we called it and it should have been held already, so. I'm hoping to get that scheduled next week. Um, and the, I would like that attorney to be there.
That I'm good.
He said he would, said he can't do Wednesday. Um, so, if you guys would like to do it after the meeting on Tuesday.
Was, help, have all your contacts and manager and give her instructions.
Yeah, I have in our meeting minutes from September twelfth, it was all discussed, the mayor, it's in the meeting minutes, that all three of us have done that and.
We're talking.
If you guys would be all right with it being after the meeting on Tuesday, a special meeting, and we'll just go into executive session.
So here, you had an executive session, evaluate the job performance of the city manager.
Yeah, before the,
what instrument or process are we going to use to evaluate?
Um, when Rick was here, or before that, we had all agreed on an evaluation form, we evaluated Rick. You guys remember that?
Yeah.
Um, and based upon the job description, you know, for contract duties. We would be having those instruments at the.
Yes, it makes sense to use the.
Yeah, sure, it's, I mean, we only did that with Rick.
Yeah.
Seven months ago, so.
We do.
Yeah.
All right. So that was your comments. Glad to see everyone here tonight, uh, I think the town looks great, the lights, the train looks great in front of the city hall. Like, see people getting ready for Christmas, like.
Again, I'm excited about the weekend and I hope to see everybody there.
I'd like to thank, Captain Carl Allen for serving.
Thank you.
Oh. Major.
Now to any other time, I have. On December.
Six thirty-five, eighteen thirty-five, or whatever.
The major's.
Oh, wait, 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 I went up.
Yeah.